Okay, like the call to order tonight's Charter Township of Oxford. Planning Commission regular meeting Thursday, January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five. We can start by rising, paying respect to our flag.
I would like to introduce the letter of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Can we note the role?
Noted, there is a forum. Just want to remind everybody, make sure that when you're speaking, you speak into the microphone and make sure that that bright green light is on. And that's it.
Thank you. Number four, approval of tonight's agenda. Note that we do have to amend the agenda to remove number twelve at the request of the applicant.
Do you want to make a motion?
Please. Make it in.
I'll make a motion that we accept the agenda minus item twelve, which was removed at the request of the applicant. Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion?
Do we know why this applicant chose to remove?
I do not know.
We don't have to know.
No. I have no idea.
Was this followed from last meeting?
No, no, this is a different.
This is just their, their master deed.
This is sanctuary, last meeting you did enclaves.
Okay, great.
It's just. They, they, we're just a little ahead of schedule. It will be back on your agenda once the documents are actually ready. There was just a little bit of junk on.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number five, conflicts of interest, ex parte contact. Does anybody have anything to report or discuss? Seeing none. Move to number six, approval of the minutes. Planning Commission regular meeting, January ninth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Mr. Chair, make the motion to approve the minutes for January ninth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion, any thing that needs to be changed in the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? A motion carries. Number seven, public comments on items not scheduled for public hearing or on this agenda. Seeing nobody in the audience. We will move to number eight, commissioners' comments. Anything this evening? Nope. All right. Number nine, public hearing, which we do not have this evening. Let's move on to number ten, unfinished business, master plan update.
Good evening, glad commissioners, Mateo, Bus, Lockwood, Carlisle, Workman Associates, with the planning consultants for the township. So this evening, what you have in front of you are the draft community profile and background chapters from the master plan. So if you, sorry. If you recall, and if you can believe, a little over a year ago, when we were kind of assessing the format and the structure of the two thousand and nineteen plan, your current plan, we discussed the fact that the background, the background studies chapter was fifty-plus pages. It was, it was just a lot of information crammed into one chapter. And so we discussed breaking it out at that time into two chapters, which is what you have in front of you this evening, the background chapter and the community profile. The best way to kind of explain these two and the differences between them is that the background really is kind of a narrative that tells a story of kind of leading up to this point and some glimpses of what's coming. And the community profile, which would be an appendix, is kind of like, hey, if you're looking for numbers and stats and things of that nature, the graphs, not that, not that that's where all of it is, but that's kind of where you would go. They tell kind of the same story in different ways. One's just more technical and one's a little bit more narrative. Where we duplicated the information between the two chapters, some of you may have noticed there's the same maps or the same references in both chapters. What we tried to do there was, we tried to duplicate the information that has kind of risen to the top of the priority list as we've gone through this process, both with the commission and the public. And so you'll notice there's a sort of, there is, I don't want to call it redundancy because it's not necessarily word for word, but natural features and preservation show up in both sections. Traffic, you know, as it relates to development and safety and things of that, shows up in both. Well, the other, the other one escapes the, you know, the different ways in which all these things affect development shows up in both. And so tonight, what we have in front of you is both of those chapters as drafted. We provided a clean and a red line for the background chapter. And that was really just with some notes to say, where did we take from two thousand and nineteen? Where have we changed it? The community profile is all new because that's really data reliant. We, we used data from two thousand and nineteen, unless we just could not find anything more updated for today. So you have the memo in front of you this evening regarding some of the questions that we're looking for. And, and per usual, it's, it's feedback, you know, are we, is what we're saying, the way it should be said, is there anything that's missing? Is there anything that should be moved? Is the background chapter still too big? Are there some things that we should just move over to community profile? And at the end of the background chapter, we kind of, we end it with some planning implications. And that's really the, those are kind of meant to paraphrase what you would like to see this master plan accomplish and be used for as the tool it becomes once it's adopted. Right, and that is really to kind of guide policy, guide decision, guide direction, and even guide resources. You know, if there's studies or projects or things that the township wants to undertake, the master plan serves as a good justification for undertaking those things. So with that, this evening, if there's, if there's some general questions, I'm happy to kind of start with those and then we can kind of work. I'll go right to left. Usually I've worked my way across the room, so I won't start with you, Mr. Hudson. We'll, we'll start with Don. But just in general, are there any general questions or any clarifications I can offer before we start? While you think about that, the one other update I wanted to give you is we're like ninety percent there, right? This road's been longer than I think anyone anticipated. However, I don't think it's uncommon for a community in your position, you really are coming up on a crossroads between the development pressures that you're feeling, but then also the many reasons why the community enjoys Oxford and wants Oxford and so wants to stay the same. So it's not uncommon for this to get drawn out. I think all of us, you know, we're excited to kind of get this finished, but we're about ninety percent there and we are, we are shooting the heavy full front-to-back draft until late February. So now with that in mind, are there any general questions before we get into the nuts and bolts of the memo?
So in general, what's the other two percent that needs to be done?
Formatting, right, so some of it's technical, just typing things up here and there. And then there are just a few tweaks to some of the other internal chapters as it relates to like the future land use map. We're, that's pretty much done, but we still got to get it in front of you probably in the final draft form. But it's really more or less just a few small items of future land use. We want to concur on a few more items with township engineering. And after that, we've pretty much got the book for you.
Thank you.
Sure. All right, why don't we, do you want to just, do you want to start working our way through the memo?
Sure.
Let's do that.
So, Mr. Chair, going through this, I found a few, like, some spacing, some spelling errors. And do you want me to go through and read through some of those things that I noticed? And maybe you have trigger thoughts on other commissioners' minds? Or this might just take me a few minutes to go through, maybe five, ten minutes, if that's okay?
Yeah, take your time.
Okay. So I reviewed some of this with Mateo ahead of time because I just saw, you know, kind of formatting stuff. And on page one, where the word, it says regional context, it's underlying that, just a space above that for.
Commissioner Walt Bullock, can I, may I add something? Totally to the pleasure of the board, or the commission, as it relates to some of the spelling spaces. If you're comfortable with me having, you know, taking your draft and returning it to you when I'm done, I'm happy to.
Okay.
I will find an interim tomorrow and they will be fixing all of those things. But the context, if you, and again, I'm happy to follow it however you want to. If you want to go through those, those as well, I'm all ears.
But I thought if I did, if I said those things, it might prevent or not make the planning commissioners feel like they have to then flag the same thing and if they catch it, so.
I'm comfortable, how would you agree with it? I just wanted to know.
I'll try to move as quickly as I can.
Yeah, go ahead, and then we'll, we'll stick to the meat and potatoes after that.
Okay. So moving on with page one, moving on, let's see, page, page three at the very bottom, that bottom whole point, we talked about the font being a little bit larger than the previous text. Let's see, I'm on page four, very, at the very bottom, says figure two. That figure two relates to the figure on the next page, just moving on over to the next page, right? And I'll give this to you, Mateo, at the end of the evening, so you can move those things around. On page seven, the, the map size, map two. If, I was asking if Mateo could move the legend maybe to the bottom or the top, the wording on the right side so that the map could be increased in size, just so for the benefit of the reader. The, I think it's easier to read that way, have a larger map.
Excuse me, just a second. I would second that, and I would say that none of the maps should be any smaller than at least a half a page because there's difficulty reading them and reading the legends as I went through this.
I think what Don and I discussed, like, basically, I'll, we'll see if we can get it to look right as every map and legend being a full page. If we can get it to set right like that, then we'll, I'll see what we can do.
Is there a need to keep it to certain number of page?
No.
Okay.
No, I mean, I, I can, yeah, that's, that's completely agreeable. I'll see if we can.
Yeah, so I'd like to see it full page to be able to read all that.
Okay, yep.
So, yeah, that comment kind of goes to all the maps that we were going through.
Excuse me.
Let's see. Page eleven, there was just a spelling error, I'll say an entity on the word or, it's not a big deal, or of. Page thirteen at the top, second sentence or second line down talks about incentives. I think you incentivized, was the word maybe we're looking for there? The, um, the map number five, or map five on page thirteen, I found interesting. You know, of course, this will get blown up. And this talks about having priorities one, two, and three of these natural features, this inventory of areas that we're trying to maintain. And, you know, I kind of noted, this is kind of for the other commissioners, that the, where the villages outlined in black on that map, to the bottom right of that, there's an area of red like touching the black line. I don't know if you can go to that in the packet and I can go through it out there. But, you know, that was a development that is actually underway right now that we voted on the preliminary site plan a few months back. And having this map to look at, to work with the developer on the PUD, or in a PUD in that case, seems like it would give us some room to argue we would like to preserve some of those natural features in that area, having a map like this included in the master plan. I think you indicated that it was not in the original, the two thousand and nineteen.
I don't believe so.
Okay.
So it's this map.
So you got this here. I believe that's the Telmore Plin slot, is that right?
Village Telmore. Oh, you're talking about the name of the development or the area?
The, well, whatever the development's called, I believe it's, it's part, part, this is part of it. It continues over this way, I believe. But anyway, I was kind of surprised to see that. I know it's a priority three, but it appears that there may be an opportunity to try to maintain the natural features of some of these developments as they come through the community or to the community.
So maybe some information on like, how, how can you use this map?
Like, maybe some stronger language to help us when making a decision of, say, a development, PUD, whatever it might be.
Okay.
So, quick question, what is the consequence of having priority one, two, and three areas? Does it mean that we may ignore for development purposes and develop, you know, priority two or priority three? And let them go ahead and let them develop over, or what?
Well, it's, so I believe it is basically the concentration of several different items between mature vegetation, species, wetlands, habitat, you know, and the more, the more you have into an area kind of aligns whether it's considered priority one, two, or three. Whenever you're doing development, really whatever is law is what, is what you can and can't do. So this, this puts these areas on the radar of a township if the township or community wants to take proactive steps in putting either some sort of reasonable restrictions over the development of that area, or purchase development rights, or some conservation easements, things of that nature.
Oh, I see. Would it make sense to define these out, what the priorities are?
As far as like, what is it that makes something a priority one and priority two and priority three? Yeah.
If I recall, the developer even asked for modifications to the standards in that same red area that we, we talked quite a bit about during that four-hour meeting that evening. But, okay, thank you. I appreciate the discussion on that point. Let's see, rolling through, we talked to maybe about page fourteen, the road network. Second sentence, not about M fifty, M twenty-four versus M fifty-nine. Again, I'll give this to you for your, your benefit to just go through. So I guess this is kind of a discussion point. I'd like to get feedback from you, Mr. Chair, and others on the commission. On page sixteen, there's a large paragraph underneath the graph that, at the very bottom of it, talks about, however, however, if those connections have not been built, the township should consider the impact on the safety of the road network when evaluating development proposals, particularly those requesting density bonuses or land use changes. I'm just wondering, again, how do we, how do we make that? I don't know if it's not an argument, but how do we have language that helps support that, that we don't get ourselves into trouble if we're trying to really highly encourage it, but they say, no, they're not going to do it? I, I mean.
Well, this is, so in this specific instance, it does speak to those two instances of, you know, your zoning ordinance has some instances where, and I think it might just be the PUD, where if you meet certain things, you can grant them a density bonus, meaning they're allowed more or less than what normally would be allowed on the conventional plan. And then the land use changes or rezoning, essentially. So this, this really relates more or less to those two instances where the planning commission does have some discretion to say yes or no. Not, not yes or no to the development, but more or less yes or no to certain proposed improvements or aspects of the development that you feel do or don't meet your concerns.
So if a developer brings a preliminary site plan in front of us, is it reasonable for us to request that they do a traffic safety study? When presenting that?
Yeah, so.
The importance of safety is, seems to be the focus of this.
It depends on what they're, it depends on what they're presenting. So like, again, if they're presenting a, an R-one project that meets the standards of R-one, depending on how big it is, it, we would likely require an engineering traffic study anyways. And that's going to generate a report that then basically says levels of service and what they think it'll do to that. So you do get that information and you can use that information to say, you know, hey, this is saying you should have a D-cell lane going into the development. Or this road currently doesn't have a, a left-hand turn lane, that needs to be a part of it. And if the projects, it's tough because only the county or M dot, depending on the road, would have the hammer to say, you will do this or we won't give you the permits. Being the township, you don't have jurisdiction over the road. Information's power, you can put it in front of the developer to say like, this traffic port's ugly. What, what are you guys going to do about it, or what do you plan to do about it? And they can sit here and say nothing, they're going to hit a wall when they get to R C O C. But that's, if it's permitted by right, you really, your power is inquisitive, but it isn't necessarily denial, unless you have Jim Sharp, your engineers, telling you this is an absolutely awful design, like, we have, we have very serious concerns about the safety of individuals. Is a handful of Fender Benders a year constitute safety? That's where you get, that's where you got to really look at the report and see what is it telling you. And we would rely on Jim Sharp to kind of say, when does it tip the needle into a safety, health, and welfare conversation? And they might, the R C O C might say, you got to put in a left-hand turn lane? And the developer says, no problem, you know what I mean? And then it's just on to the next thing. Levels of operating service is a tough one because D is acceptable. It's like the only place in the world where a D in your life is acceptable. I'm just framing it to say that telling us the traffic isn't, is going to get worse doesn't always stop the county from issuing the permit and isn't always give us the ability to say no, unless there's something inherent in the design where someone, either a vehicle or a driver or pedestrian is, is going to get hurt, like, you can foresee it just because it's that poor of a design. This language speaks to PUDs and rezoners, which again is more discretion. You might say, no, we're not going to up the zoning because then you're going to bring a five-hundred-unit development and there's no way the area can support that.
So how, that right there, though, how do we make that? Don't we need a traffic study or something? How do we make that statement?
I, I would want to rely on folks who've done this more than I have. In a rezoning, you may be able to, depending on the size of the lot and type of density that they want to go to, you, you may be in a position to require a traffic impact study as a part of that rezone application. But I would want to, I'd want to talk to some folks before I came back and said yes to that for sure.
Yeah, it just sounds like that could be a feeling, like, we should have data that helps inspire that decision of we're, you know, we're not letting this happen for the following reasons. Here's the data to support it, not because I feel that the intersection is too busy. That's all.
Yep, no.
Is a good argument. Okay.
We have to be careful of causing extra costs on the developer or imposing extra costs on the developer for something you may not really need to do. So it's just something we'd have to be careful of.
This study kind of lays it out.
Yeah.
Like, you guys, if, I mean, if, you'll get more used to them as you see them. The traffic impact studies are thick, but go to the end, and then, and that, that's where they line out. These are the things you should really.
And they did that for that development from a few months ago.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and that level of service at Drainer and twenty-four is.
And that was just the county, you know? Right now, that particular development is trying to work with M dot because of its proximity to M twenty-four, so.
Okay, I'm thinking.
Yeah.
Let's keep on moving on and try to get through this quick. We, Mateo, we talked about, let's see, page twenty. The sentence at the bottom of page twenty, where it says, however, there was not strong support for increasing the lot size of lots, and it was referring to the community survey. Yeah, and I, and I mentioned that I thought that that was, that were not a strong support for increasing. It really should be not a strong, strong support for decreasing the size of lots. So I was confused, and I read that, and based on what I remember of the, the survey, that there was, that, those were in conflict of each other, that sentence saying.
Yeah, and if, again, if my memory serves, I do feel like I remember seeing those contradictions in the responses. And I, again, I mean, we did those back in March. We almost did those a year ago.
So if it was a response, you visit like a written response that someone may have put in there? Because I'm looking at, I was.
Well, I was going to say, all, all, most of our responses were, were select from, you know.
The number of.
Yeah, it was make a selection, not type something in. So it's not, it's not left up to interpretation as to how someone wrote it or answered it. It's really what they selected. I just feel like there was a conversation about that question being worded in a way that may have been misunderstood by the people using it. But again, I want to go back, I want to look into that further. And if it's a typo on our end, it's a typo on our end. If it's not, then I want to bounce back with Megan and see, does this need kind of a note in parentheses indicating that the question may have, you know what I'm saying? But, but we have to be, we have to be careful because if we can't say that for sure, then, then I can't put it in there.
Okay, yeah, I just, when I read it, I thought it conflicted with the overall responses that is. And I'll, I'll repeat myself just for clarity to the other commissioners, that my interpretation of the survey results were as lot sizes were, starting on six thousand, were small, the smallest lot size, there was less desire by the overall community to have that size of a lot. And as the lot sizes got larger and larger, the community was more in favor of those lot, lot sizes.
Yeah.
So.
Like I said, well, I'll, I'll look back on that one.
And as I think about that, I think it was in our March, uh, two thousand and twenty-four or April packet was the survey results for other planning commissioners. If they wanted maybe go back to those packets and look at those survey results to help maybe give you a, an idea of how the, of the new guides on the, on the commission, to look at those survey results, it might be helpful.
I believe the survey results are on the township website right on the front page.
Oh, are they?
It's listed survey, master plan survey.
Okay, great, thank you. Mateo, page twenty-one, in the middle there, there was a, that COVALL community research talked about four hundred and sixty-four million. Yep, it does seem, that number, I have a question, that, that seems very high, but I'd be interested in understanding a little bit more about that at some point if, um, give the opportunity to look at that.
Yep.
Let's see, we have a long couple of spelling things on page twenty-two, just small stuff, not a big deal. And then on page twenty-six, we talked about, there's five goals that are outlined, and the first two goals are a repeat of each other.
Yep.
It would be, I'd like to know what those are.
Yeah.
If, if there were redundant, if there was one missing.
Yeah.
I'd have to dig back in the master plan from two thousand and nineteen to see where those. Do you know if there were goals in that also similar to this? Were they transferred over from nineteen, is that?
Well, yeah, I mean, so we use those as the basis for how we develop the goals going forward. So some of them are carryover and some of them are added in.
Okay. Those seem pretty important, right, for our, as I actually don't think about.
Well, and then ties to everything we're trying to accomplish. Right, when we went through like the implementation chapter a month or so ago.
Oh, it was in, it was part of that?
I mean, this is kind of derived from all the work that was done on those. It's almost, it's almost like a summation of them.
Let's see. I think that, that, yeah, that's, that concludes, that's it for me, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, for Commissioner Blakenham, any thoughts on the background chapter?
No, I'm okay.
Okay. Commissioner Turner?
I made my request in enlargement of all the maps so that they're read in detail.
Yeah, hundred percent. Commissioner Bailey?
A couple of things, page fifteen, there's a, a table that talks about the high-frequency intersection crash ranking. I know there was a reference that the most notable was Lapeer Road and Drainer. Question I had, the next three, I'll say M twenty-four Oakwood Road West, M twenty-four Oakwood West, twenty-four Oakwood West. If you total those up, that's substantially more than Drainer. And then if you look down, M twenty-four Railroad, M twenty-four Railroad. How come we don't just put one with the total there? Is there different rankings for the accidents or?
It, it may just be an error in the way that the, that the table downloaded because a lot of this information comes from, a lot of this information comes from SEPCOD and the county. And it may have just been, it may have just been a way in which it downloaded from there. I mean, obviously, the, the average crashes number changes, but everything else in the column stays the same. So let me, let me look into that.
Okay, just because, I mean, we say that Lapeer and Drainer is, you know, the most notable, but yet you look at Oakwood and twenty-four, there's forty-eight accidents, which is.
If you have all.
Almost double what, like, M twenty-four Drainer is. And then one other thing I had was page twenty. You know, we talked about the vacant, uh, land being developed. We give percentages sixty-nine point three percent of the vacant land and eighty-three has been developed. There's twenty. I'd be curious to maybe add acreage to kind of put that to perspective that, hey, there's ten thousand undeveloped acres or. You know, what, what does that twenty percent make up?
So you're just saying the percentages of the vacant land also given in acres?
Yeah, just kinda give it a, a, a perspective that, you know, there's still so much. And then, um, the other one that I would like to see is twenty-three, page twenty-three. You know, we've got a, a small paragraph off township buildings, the police, fire, schools, uh, senior programs, library, things like that. Um, I mean, obviously people come to Oxford because it's Oxford, they come looking possibly for jobs. But the big thing that really draws people to this is, one, our community, but two, the schools and there's nothing really highlighted. It's just, yeah, there's two districts, there's ten schools, twelve schools, whatever. I almost think that needs to be a big highlight that, you know, the schools. You know, this certification or what draws people to that Oxford school? You know, no offense, but this would get somebody to go, oh, they have a school. And I think that needs to really be a focus.
As in like the, what is it that defines the quality of the schools?
Exactly, you know, are they, you know, in the top five or, you know, they're, that, just, you know, where does it stand? If somebody's outside of Oxford looking to come to Oxford. They're not gonna come because our police department has, you know, so many calls or the fire department does CPR. Again, you know, not a big deal, but people are gonna look at, what does that school district have that's gonna draw people in?
Okay.
And, uh, same thing in Parks and Rec, I, I think there needs to be a substantially more highlight than that, you know. Why would you wanna come live here and come recreation here?
So, and, and we can look at that. Facilities is really just to highlight how many, like, the services that you have and how many they are. Because you could argue, right, you got good police, you got good fire. You got, but let me, I don't think that there's anything in there about, you know, the, the harm in referencing the quality of, of those services.
Sure.
So, um, yeah, let me, I will take a look at that.
I mean, we do, we have great police and fire.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
But it's, you know, at the same time, people, that's the first thing they look to is, if I'm moving to that community. What do their schools look like and what do they have to do outside of school?
Let me, I tell you what, let me take a look at that. Those, those remarks are valid. They might just be valid somewhere else. Okay. Cause this is talking about facilities and buildings.
Sure.
Noted.
Okay, and that's it for me on that part.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yeah, so just to follow up on that, I would certainly avoid platitudes. Say, hey, we've got great police or, or great whatever, make sure it's fat face. There's some data behind it.
Sure.
I did have one thing on page twenty-seven, water system. And he makes, you make an interesting comment, he in the water district, it's certainly in good condition. What does that mean? To me, it seems, that seemed like a platitude, right?
Well, so, and I, and it can be expanded upon.
Expand on it as, as to why, why? You know, that's, it's, I, I mean, I don't know. Water quality is always, you know, meets, exceeds expectations, you know, I don't know what, you know, whatever, whatever the facts are that make it good.
So like water quality or age of infrastructure.
Yeah.
Okay. That's all I have. Commissioner Austin?
So I was on the planning commission steering committee, so I have a little background on this stuff, but to go off Corey, what he was saying about ob- obviously the Oxford schools. It might be like I just typed in a couple of things, why you would come to Oxford for the, uh, schools. It's like high-quality education, interbackglow area programs, focusing on career technology education. Uh, strong extracurricular programs, small town feel, excellent resources. I don't know if that has to be in there or something like that, but that's what draws people to a community. So I don't know if that's exactly what they're looking for, but as a, as a parent of four kids, you know, when I can, I, I've been born and raised in Oxford, so I know what Oxford's about. You know, so like for me, I can sell it to a lot of people and what it is. But the thing is, is like to have that in there, that might be something that we don't have to say it's just good, but why it's good, why do they come?
No, and again, I think that there's, I think there's a place for it. This is, I mean, it, this can be, I wanna say this can be whatever you want it to be. But master plans are not necessarily marketing tools, they're policy documents. And so like in your instance with township, the school district is its own entity, right? The town, school district can do whatever it wants. Township, this, that and the other. But, so what you can do is that you can highlight the fact that you have quality schools and that where possible township policies should align with supporting, you know, the, the continuation of the good school, something along that nature. So this is, not that, not that we don't want people from outside to read this and understand the community that you have. But this is, this is more geared towards policy than this marketing. But again, Bailey points about that you have quality schools. It's not an unfair statement to make in your master plan.
I think that's enough for me.
Okay. All right, well, let's, let's see. So make sure I'm not gonna say anything before we go to the community profile. And again, as always, you know, this is, this does not have to be the, like, the book does not close on this once we walk out of here. If you think of something after, you email us, you call, whatever it is, um, you know, we do try to like, as we move on from the meeting, we try to keep chipping away and not going back to things that we've already discussed, but again, if there's anything that comes back to the fact, just let us know. Um, so then the other, the other section of the master plan that you had this evening is a community profile. And so as I said, this one's a little bit more technical and there's a little bit more language as it relates to the projections of some of these numbers and where at least the numbers say Oxford is headed. Uh, and so as it relates to that. Are there any changes as far as content or formatting, you know, the commissioners are reviewing it? Like, let's, yeah, let's go back to right to left, commissioners.
Same, it's kind of same thing with the map, same thing with the maps.
Oh, same thing with the maps, okay.
The, um, page fifty-nine in there, the, the graphic on this, I don't know if, uh, what, if you can see, yeah.
Which one?
Page fifty-nine, yeah, the graphics, if you wanna scroll to that.
Yep, I can.
Even on page fifty-five, the graphics there are kind of, you know, less than desirable for a, uh, final.
I mean, I, yes, you can keep going. I, I think there's a general consensus about everything, you know, any, any, any visual aid needs to be as big as it can without looking awkward.
Yeah.
Kind of a fair statement.
Right, and having the, just the clarity, the, the image just isn't very clear. I'm not sure if it was snipped and dragged over or how, exactly how that worked, but.
Yeah, this is an excuse, I promise. The, the, this formatting system that we use in design is like an amazing tool. It is not user-friendly at all. So it's not that it was, it's not that it was put in front of you this way this evening thinking that you'd be okay with it. It was just, we wanna get the content out so you can see where, where we're going with it.
I'd even be interested in seeing a before and after map side by side, possibly.
Before and after as far as like, just from a formatting perspective or?
Just, uh, you know, here's where we were, here's where we are now, you know, and then here's where we wanna be type thing.
Yeah, we'll print out a twenty nineteen map when you can, just put them next to each other.
I'll walk into that.
Yeah, we're getting towards the end of our budget. Commissioner Bailey, it's, it might just be printing at this point. Um, okay, uh, sorry, Commissioner Wallcheck.
I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner Blakenworth?
I'm good.
Commissioner Turner? Commissioner Bailey?
I, I'm good with this one. I, I think you gave it a good job.
Commissioner Megan?
I think you did a pretty good job with both parts.
Thank you, but I'm good with this.
Okay.
Commissioner Austin?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, no, thank you guys. Um, yeah, so with that, um, like I said, we can kind of work on these edits. Um, and again, I'm happy to, and old Commissioner Wallace said, has indicated that we can take his notes. Um, I'd be happy to take anyone else's and get them back to you, of course, can and can't. I've got my feedback here. Um, but if there's any other questions, I'm happy to take them. Like I said, we're open. We're shooting for mid-February, end of February to have a full draft to you guys. And so the process from there is, you take one last look at it, again, we can edit from there, but once the planning commissioner is comfortable with where it is, we can hold a public hearing. And then it goes out for sixty-three days, uh, to the, to your community neighbors and any kind of public utility or infrastructure that runs through the community. They have sixty-three days to respond. If they come back with nothing, or if they come back with some notes that you wanna consider, we can further update from there. And then from that point, it's on to the township board for its approval. I think it'll be adopted. So we are probably on trajectory for late spring.
If I, if you don't mind, um, just because we have so many new members. I think giving us more time to review once you get to that ninety-plus percent where we're starting to review it. I would, um, ask if you can give us more than say a week, if we get a packet, say on two Thursday, for the following Thursday. To review a master plan that's a hundred and fifteen, whatever pages.
No, I, I agree. I don't, I don't wanna put it in, I don't wanna send it out Thursday and expect you guys in seven days to come back with it. Um, so let me kind of work with my superiors on how that falls in the timeline, but yeah, I wanna give you more than your standard packet review once it's a full draft.
Do you have any other advice on with, with myself and new members, how we might, besides the survey results, reviewing those? Be ready for that? Ready for that review of the draft, the final draft?
Yeah, I mean.
If that makes sense, final draft.
No, it's, it's, right, it's tough because it's not gonna be, well, it can be whatever you'd like it to be. Oh, I think you're by well say your meetings happen at the ten, but I'm going through a hundred and fifty pages, page by page, that's not what it is. It's really kind of read it to front to back and did it flow, right? Did it flow the way, did it tell the story that the master plan's kind of meant to tell with like, here's where we are, right, or here's where we've been, here's where we are. Here's where the numbers say we're going. Here's the stuff that's important to us and here's what we're gonna do about it. That's, I mean, that's what this document should read beginning to end. And so, not to say that if there isn't something that just strikes you as, we, we still need to address this, or we still need to change this, or I don't think it was strong enough here. We can still make those edits, but when it comes time to, for that meeting, it won't be a page by page conversation. Does that make sense? Again, I'm not, now that I'm not gonna answer questions, I just, that's, we'll look for an empty agenda. And you guys can bring some Red Bulls, cause we'll be here for a while. Okay, there's no further questions? I'll take a seat. All right, or thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to number eleven, new business. Sure that everybody has heard and received the resignation notice from Vice Chair Jonathan Knoll. Effective January fourteenth. Uh, in order for that to be effective, uh, we need a motion and a vote by this committee or this board.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Vice Chair Jonathan Knoll, effective January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Mr. Chair. He dated his letter, the fourteenth. But it's not effective until it's accepted, so the motion should read today's date.
Okay.
Because, like, you, in the minutes, you're gonna see, he's still in the minutes until this motion is adapted.
Okay.
Because he's technically still a member.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chair, if I can make the motion to, uh, accept the resignation of Vice Chair John Knoll, Jonathan Knoll, effective January
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion?
Just like the thing for your service.
Yeah, same here. Um, John is a very, very valuable asset to this board. Um, I learned quite a bit and appreciated everything. He helped me, uh, get into the, here. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. With that, with him being Vice Chair, um, we now have an opening in the, uh, Vice Chair position. And I think Cheryl, you had sent out a notice according to our bylaws, uh, in order to be in any of those positions, it requires one year of service prior. Um, which would leave, uh, the current Secretary Turner and, uh, Mr. Velosik uh, as eligible candidates for that. So we would need a nomination, um, and an acceptance of a nomination for either of these gentlemen. Don't everybody jump at once?
Just a reminder that Commissioner Turner is currently the secretary. So if somebody nominates him as Vice Chair, then we will have to nominate a secretary.
Correct.
I'd like to nominate Bob Turner as Vice Chair.
He gets to accept.
Would you accept that nomination?
Would you like that position?
I'd rather accept a secretary position if that is acceptable.
Okay. All right, then I'll accept.
Okay.
So you also need a second.
So we have a motion, we need a second.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second to. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Now we have, uh, an open position for secretary. So now you can pay back.
I'd like to make a motion that, uh, we elect a dime.
That's gonna help you with last name.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm trying to force your hand.
No. As Secretary of the Planning Commission.
And I'm assuming you would accept that.
I would accept that.
So we have a motion, we need a second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, that motion carries. Um, the next, uh, um, item is appointment to the ordinance review committee. I know Mr. McNold was on that. Um, I'm currently the alternate, so I think we'll just leave that one for now. Um, and, uh, we'll address that down the road if we need to. Item D, twenty twenty-five planning commission meeting schedule. Has everybody reviewed that? Any questions or concerns with that?
May I?
Absolutely.
I just wanna make sure I understand what the O R C position is. So right now, you are going to stay in the alternate role and at a future meeting, you will appoint the third person.
Correct.
And again, life happens, but you're, you're okay with the O R C being scheduled as it is now?
Correct.
Okay, just wanna make sure.
Correct, no, appreciate that.
Yep.
Um, and I'm assuming we need a motion for the calendar?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody like to make a motion to approve our twenty twenty-five calendar?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the calendar of meetings for the calendar year twenty twenty-five as published. I believe we received them during the last meeting.
Okay, we have a motion.
A second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion or any, you need to adjust on that calendar? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item twelve, uh, we removed, uh, earlier, so we will move on to communication committee reports. The, uh, ordinance review committee.
The ordinance review committee needed, met this afternoon. Basically, it consisted of Mateo, uh, Dave, Peter, uh, Jack Curtis and myself. We looked at the workload plan for this, this year, twenty twenty-five. Moved some things around, adjusted them. And we will plan on having them here, had our first meeting in February for your review and acceptance. for your review and acceptance.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
One thing just to note, and I, this could have been part of the plan of report too, is, um, after the meeting day, I noticed that we will very, very likely have a special land use hearing and site plan review on the thirteenth. I don't think that'll stop us from having the work plan on the agenda as well, but I just wanted to, I just wanted to throw that out there as well. The thirteenth, you will have a site plan and special land use, ninety-five percent sure of that. I don't think the, I don't think that stops the work plan from being on there. It may, it may hold us back from putting master plan stuff on just 'cause we don't, I mean, too many heavy lifts in the meeting isn't a good thing.
All right. And your next meeting is the thirteenth?
Yes.
All right. Any, uh, planner, engineer reports?
Pretty much just taking it, yeah, the thirteenth, we're probably gonna have special land use and site plan, and so actually, we should. For the new members, so special land uses require public hearings, and the way that that's set up is, there are uses in your community that are deemed to be either more intense or more impactful than just what are standard permitted uses. So special land uses, when they do a site plan for that use, they have to give us a site plan, but then they also have to give us a special land use application in which the ordinance has specific items in which, or criteria that they have to meet as well. Some of that criteria can be subjective, right? So it is a, a lot of what you'll do for permitted uses is objective. If they meet the requirements, it's pretty much a yes. Special land use is a little bit of subjectivity to it. But one of the more important things is that public hearings require notice of every property owner within three hundred feet of the proposed use. So when we inform you that you probably have a special land use public hearing in front of you, it wouldn't be unrealistic to think that this room might have more about this. This room would have more folks in than it does now, 'cause there's nobody here, but probably you'll have a larger turnout for those meetings. Um, and those meetings can take a little bit longer because you do offer the public, uh, a certain amount of time to, to voice their concerns, in which you can take that into consideration for your decision.
And I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Susan, our bylaws, we do have the availability to stop a meeting at ten o'clock if they're running. Except, believe it all.
I think it's ten.
Where we could table the discussion at ten, yeah, okay.
I'm not, I don't think this is gonna run to ten, but that, we would, but, uh, the point well taken, just that they typically are longer meetings and typically you get a few more folks in the room.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I know there's not technically a another comment spot, but because we have so many new members, and that there will be a site plan, special land use, just some, um, procedural etiquette things, the planning commission does not engage verbally with the applicant or the audience. All communication goes through the chair, the applicants address the chair, it's not a back and forth. And the only other thing, um, just a reminder that a motion requires a second, it's not support, because you can second a motion that you don't support. So it's a second for a motion, and then any discussion that takes place is discussion of the commission. It's not discussion where somebody in the audience raises their hand and they, I have something to say now. Once a motion is made and it is seconded, that motion belongs to the commission and the commission alone. It doesn't belong to the public at all. So just remember that these meetings, the township board meetings, the ZBA meetings, they're a meeting of this body. The public is welcome to attend, the welcome, uh, the, the public has time for input, but it's not their meeting, it's your meeting to conduct business that you have been tasked to conduct. So just kind of keep that in your mind when meetings are going on.
And the kind of playoff of that too, we're working with Cheryl on scheduling a training. Where we'll, we'll find an agenda that's gonna be light, or it doesn't have anything scheduled for it, and we'll get everyone together for typically a training where our, our firm and your legal counsel kind of walk you through what can you do and can't you do at a meeting, based on what you're reviewing. Um, we won't be able to do that before next, next meeting, but I don't, I don't, I'm, I'm going to knock on wood, I don't think what's coming in front of you is turn the world upside down. It's, it's a special land use in a residential area, um, but with the project itself, the applicant can be very organized and, and prepared to present to you. One thing I would say that we're working on with Cheryl as well is, uh, the Michigan State University Extension Program offers something called Citizens Planner, and it is an online course that you can take, and it's, I've taken it. It's very, it's, it is written explicitly for you guys. You're not planners, you're not, you know, developers, you're not, you know what I'm saying? Like, you're, you're not part of a lot of the folks that you're gonna see come and go from this dais. It's, it is specifically crafted for folks looking at it from your point of view. Um, and you will go through it and you'll say, this is kind of hokey and corny, and it is. But it is, it's a very good program for you to kind of understand, again, what you can and can't do, what your roles are. Um, and so we're working with Cheryl to, because we've got another seat to fill, it's a little pre, I'm assuming we'll be able to get that filled relatively quickly, but we don't wanna do a training, we're not a full board yet, we don't wanna run you through Citizens Planner if you're not a full board yet. But we'll work with her to get you guys, uh, hopefully signed up for something like that. And it's, it's self-paced, um, but it's, it's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But even at the training, though, we should think about recording it, so we do get new folks, they could just.
Go and watch it?
Watch it and.
You know, I gotta feed my kids too.
You know.
Trying to cut me out here. No, no, I know, I hear, yeah. Yeah, I mean, there, there are, I mean, not even just for our trainings, there are a lot of online tools, and if you, you know, if you wanna go down the Google rabbit hole and say, even email us to say, hey, I found this, do you know anything about it, is it worth it, so on, so forth, we'd be happy to guide. Or if you have questions straight up, in these instances, what can we, can't we, we're, we're here to answer those questions.
Thank you very much. With that, uh, we'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that the planning meeting, uh, January twenty-third, twenty twenty-five be closed.
I'll second it.
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.